For a regular meeting, October the 4th, 2021, I ask all to stand and say, please allegiance your flag with Tudy Koch, Raymond Koch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what I saw.
We have Billy, Councilman Dallas is joining us by Zoom, and Jessica Emery will not be here tonight as well. We don't have a large agenda, but we might try to make it as large as we can. We might do some other things. First thing is approval amendments of the regular meeting on September 20th, which you have attached to your, to your program there. And I ask that you look at that and see any correction or additions, let me know, or let Lori know if, other than that, we'd entertain a motion to, to accept them the way Lori's printed them.
I'm making a motion.
Clayton's made a motion.
Second.
Second, Moon, all in favor?
Aye.
Billy, you going to vote in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, he'll be on probably just a little bit of a delay.
Okay. Okay. Let's do ratification of bills. Billy, did you get a chance to look over those? The bill list?
He made a motion.
For?
For.
Okay. He's got a motion to approve the bill list. I say, your second, Tudy's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Looks like we got some visitors who want to talk to us about disc golf. And Tammy, did you want to introduce our guests?
Yeah, I have JT Burns and Dustin Lashley. I know that we had talked about putting disc golf at the, over on the new trail. However, he has been playing around with a different type of course, and you all have a copy of it. He actually held a tournament on the 26th, and it went very well. We think that this might be a better course, and I will let you, let them explain it all to you. That's why I asked them to come here to answer any questions, because my knowledge on disc golf is very minimal.
Hi. So, we ran a tournament, the 26th, September 26th. We had 71 players come out and play, and we had up, on the layout you see on the back nine, we had just temporary holes that we borrowed from players in the area. I think it went really well. We played in conjunction with a baseball tournament as well. So, this was, this was around the fields, and for the most part, it went really well.
Now, what are you proposing? We see that. Is that going to be a permanent proposal, or are you, we're still, when we do the trail, going to reconsider?
Yeah. As far as I know, I don't know the exact map of the trail, so, I mean, this can be adjusted when the time comes, but as far as the layout goes, I don't think that it's going to interfere with the trail at all.
Tammy, didn't we, didn't we have the layout of the trail?
We do. It goes up, goes up along our property line, up through the woods into the aquatic center area, and then comes back down to the Veterans Memorial, and then crosses over to Upper Bell. But what this means is that we, they don't have to wait any longer, and they've waited so long now to get this done, and I just thought this was a better opportunity. And JT and I met Friday, and we walked through, and then Wes met with us and walked through some of the baskets. We already have the baskets.
That certainly puts them on the back nine right now, and like I said, he's used them, and it's turned out well.
It has, and even talking with Jody, he didn't see any issues with them going around the ball field at all.
Are you going to put in concrete pads for the toss pads?
Yes.
That would be the hope.
Yeah. There's some of them that we thought could tee off from.
From the walking trail.
From the walking trail.
Yeah.
There's others that, you know, want to belong, because it would go all the way along our property line, we signed behind baseball, so we can carry it.
It goes around the baseball field and up towards the aquatic center.
I'd see us make a permanent, a permanent back nine, especially with launch pads and stuff, when six or eight months, who knows, down the road, that we might have a better plan for them. And you did say you put that, you're asking for bids.
Well, they would still be going, they would still be going on that back side by baseball.
Yes.
They would still be going there, and that's where we put most of the pads, is in that area. The other ones are coming from, the only difference we did was what? Wasn't eight.
So, seven and eight, we talked about changing it just a little bit, but then on the back nine, the, the only real two holes that you want to have pads on, if we wanted to wait on pads, would be the long distance holes, so hole 16, and then maybe 18, just so you have sturdy footing, you don't want to fall down trying to throw as hard as you can.
Just pointing ring and everything else.
Yeah. All of the others, I mean, they're short enough distances, or we've got, like, the trail that we could tee off from. So, like, hole 13, during the tournament, we teed off on the trail. Same with hole 11, and those are the two, the two others that are really pushing a distance where you want sturdy footing.
Tammy, you and I discussed today, what's the talking, what's the timeframe on getting that money spent and getting something done over there?
Well, we just put out the bid on Saturday when we hit the paper, and the 20, I think it's the 23rd, is that right, Lori? The 23rd, I think, is when I have opening the bids on that.
I see.
So, it, you know, it all depends on the contractor and how fast they get the material. Wes was kind enough to go in there, clear some of the area, so that anybody looking at it could actually go into the wooded area without.
I like the, having that nine, back nine available now, but I would almost try to avoid making anything permanent, because I said, we're coming into winter time, and if we can get this project going, and we've been waiting two years for it.
Right.
So, JT, it's not something that COVID really put the stop on this. This should have been done a year ago, and it was no, no shortcoming on our part. But I'm tickled to death that you got 18 holes right now.
Yeah. Now, those, that back nine, they were just temporary baskets, I mean, that we had players in the area to, to let us borrow.
Yes.
It'd be far easier to run more tournaments if we had something in the ground.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, are we, I'm, I'm considering this as late in year for an outside event of any type, is it not?
Not for disc golf. I mean, we've got players that play through the year.
Even while it's now, some people are still playing.
And they've been playing, they've had leagues going also.
Yeah.
Well, I, I like it being used, and it sounds to me like you're doing a real good job, both of you, in promoting it and getting people out there. My, like I said, my only, only thing, drawback to me is, we get our trail in, of course, we're not talking about lots of money anyway, I just hate to do a lot of concrete work and stuff, turn around, and we could do it better with the, with the trail.
The basket's already wrapped in concrete, and I think that Wes said there may be a possibility that we just got to put a little bit in to stabilize it, so it's, and then they've offered, all of their group here has offered to help install them all.
I don't see any problem with it. Did you want to say something, Wes?
Yeah, JT, if it comes down to it, and the walking track goes in, and if I'm not mistaken, it goes, the new trail would go across the top of the upper side of the park, right through holes one, two, and three.
Yeah.
If it came, if we went ahead and done the 18 here, and then you done away with one, two, and three, and put them into the woods around the other track.
Yeah.
Would that be, got to get them away from the walking area, because that new trail's going to be, yeah, the new trail's going to be right beside three of the holes, and you could just move them on around and add three more holes into the woods.
You could just dig into the woods up there.
And add to the walking track up in that area then.
I don't see an issue. Moon, what do you think?
I'm glad they're using it the way they are. I heard by the other day, and I never seem like people.
Yeah.
Y'all have to come out and play sometime. It's like.
My kids play, and I want some.
Is that right? Clayton, what do you think?
I think it's fine.
I do too.
Go for it, yep.
Billy, what do you think?
Yes, I'm good with it.
I am too. We just do it by consensus, and we're good with it.
Why can't you do a motion?
You want a motion? Okay. Moon make a motion. Clayton, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Favor, Billy?
Aye.
What we want. Okay, JT.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dustin, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You also have attached is your approval, July and August 2021 financial statement. Anybody got any questions on that?
So, let me read it.
Second.
Second.
Margie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second reading of an ordinance amending a zoning map to change district classification of Elizabeth Town Road from R-5 residential multifamily to C-1 highway commercial. That's, we had that zoning map our last meeting, that's at property off 62, and this will be the second reading of that. Here a motion?
She's got to read it first.
She's got to read it first, okay.
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map in Tyler's zoning map, Litchfield, Kentucky, by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky, is here and after described in the R-5 residential multifamily to C-1 highway commercial, whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on September 13th, 2021, held a public hearing on application number RZ-21-106. The property is currently owned by L&amp;R Rentals, Grayson LLC, Kentucky Limited Liability Company, 1595 Elizabeth Town Road, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754, owners, and is designated as a portion of J.C. Lee &amp; Sons, Litchfield Farm Division Law, 5D Book 503, Page 33, Grayson County Clerk's Office. That portion being property that borders other property currently owned by owner, which is now zoned C-1, and extending 627 dot 35 feet on one side, and 702 dot 08 feet on the other side, as is highlighted on the diagram attached here too, incorporated here and by reference. The request asks for a change from R-5 residential multifamily to C-1 highway commercial, and whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission, and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property. Its recommendation is attached, incorporated here and by reference, and now therefore being ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Boundaries of the district is shown on District Map titled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, being as same is hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made apart hereof is fully set out herein, including the rezoning request from the Planning Commission dated September 13th, 2021, to the Litchfield City Council. So, the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description as a portion of J.C. Lee &amp; Sons, Litchfield Farm Division Law, 5D Book 503, Page 33, Grayson County Clerk's Office. That portion being property that borders other property currently, currently owned by owner, which is now zoned C-1, and extending 627 dot 35 feet on one side, and 702 dot 08 feet on the other side, as is highlighted on the diagram attached here too, incorporated here and by reference. Now zoned C-1 highway commercial, after the adoption of this ordinance upon the express condition that access to the property will be through the previously zoned C-1 property of owner, which will enable the owner to carry on commercial business within the, within the area rezoned. This ordinance shall be a full force in effect following publication as required by law. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict, given a second reading and duly enacted by the legislative body of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky on the 4th day of October 2021, after being first read on the 25th day of September 2021.
Okay. Moon's done made a motion to approve it, and Clayton, you seconded it, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Anybody, any visitor, pleasure you want to visit? You want to say anything important? Tyler, how's code enforcement coming? Do you have any houses on the agenda to be tore down or anything?
I've got several that needs to be, and I'm ready to have the paperwork ready, we just need to get it taken care of.
Okay, well, good. I thought we'd go into executive session on possible litigation.
It is KRS 61.
61 dot 810, 1F.
No, 1C.
Not 1C.
Well, we'll have to look up here.
Discussions of proposer pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency, which is the City of Litchfield, so.
I hear a motion.
Some of.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All we're going to do, Billy, that. What are we going to do, a Billy Dallas?